Good evening. My name is Art Spru. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. This is the Planning Board Hybrid Meeting for April 28, 2025, 5:30 PM. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. I see no notifications. Pursuant to Governor Healy's March 28, 2025, signing of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, until June 30, 2027, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to be, to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 508-945-4410, Conference ID 533-6587, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Begin with the road call vote. Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, present.
Bob Werschafter?
Bob Werschafter, present.
Bob Dubas?
Bob Dubas, present.
Charlene Greenhall is Epsom, Frank Shear is Epsom, and Catherine Halpern will be joining us maybe later remotely. And I'm Art Spru. I'm also present. Let's begin with the minutes. We have several of them here. First one is from March 10, 2025. Do I have any comments or edits to this minutes? I had none myself. Nope? And do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 10, 2025?
I make that motion. And I'm second.
All right. We'll do a road call vote. Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Werschafter?
Bob Werschafter, approve.
Bob Dubas?
Bob Dubas, approve.
And Art Spru, I approve. Next is March 17, 2025 minutes. And I had no comments on these. Any comments from any of the other board members?
I move we approve.
Second.
All right.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Werschafter?
Bob Werschafter, approve.
Bob Dubas?
Dubas, approve.
Art Spru, I approve. March 24, 2025. No comments by the Chair. Any other edits, comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
Move we approve the minutes of 24th, March 24th. A second.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob?
Bob Werschafter, approve.
Bob Dubas?
Stain.
I'm Stain.
I wasn't here.
I think you have to do it in necessity. We needed four members to vote for it, don't we?
Okay, I'll approve.
Okay. Yeah. And Art Spru, I approve. And the last minutes is April 14, 2025. I have no edits to this one.
Wow, amazing job, Ann.
Yeah. Ann, he's done a great job on these minutes.
I move we approve the April 14 minutes?
I'll second it.
All right, Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Werschafter? Bob Werschafter, approve.
Dubas, approve.
And Art Spru, I approve. Okay. Next item on the agenda is 487, 489 Main Street, the Squire. I think Mr. Norcross, you are going to present for the applicant?
Yes, I am. Jamie Norcross, representing One Drop Real Estate LLC. They, my clients threw the, there was the one-year period for the summer operation as part of the statement of conditions, and then it was reviewed again in January. And so I think at this point, they've satisfied all of the conditions that were part of that statement of conditions, so they have asked for a release of the statement this evening.
Okay. Do I have any comments or questions from the board members on this? Okay, I would like to make one suggestion on this. If we're going to release the statement of conditions, I would like to make a recommendation that we sent a letter to the board, the Select Board, that Condition 3, where we hold the hours as identified in Condition 3, that we were recommending that those be maintained as, as part of our original recommendation. Again, this would just be a letter to the Select Board, us notifying them, because this, the conditions are being released and it falls into their, their hands after this.
If you need a motion, I'll make it.
Okay, okay, let's, let's.
Make a motion to send the letter?
Do you want to make a motion to send the letter?
Send the letter with the time, the same time
Okay.
as we had already.
On the Condition 3, right. All right. Let's do a separate vote on that, and then we'll vote on the release. Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob?
Bob Werschafter, approve.
Bob Dubas, approve.
And Art Spru, I approve. So now we'll vote to release the Statement of Conditions for One Drop Real Estate?
I move we.
For 47 to 48, 49 Main Street.
Okay. I'm, I can't do this like Charlene. I, I move we drop the Statement of Conditions on 47, 49 Main Street.
Ann, a second?
Second.
All right, Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob?
Bob Werschafter, approve.
Dubas, approve.
And Art Spru, I approve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Site Plan Approval Amendment Change of Use for 200 Meeting House Road. We have a, are we continuing this?
Yes, we will be continuing this one. We have not heard from the applicant. They did not get us the revised plan yet. So I would recommend that you continue it to the May 12 meeting.
All right, so do I have a motion to continue this to the May 12, 2025 meeting?
I move.
Is it 5:00 PM?
I move that we have the site, that we.
Continue.
Continue the Site Plan Approval Amendment Change of Use at 200 Meeting House Road to the.
May 12.
May 12th at 5:00.
At 5:00.
I'll second it.
All right, Warren?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Werschafter, approve.
Dubas, approve.
Art Spru, I approve. Okay, next is 16 Sequantet Road. And this is a, I think it's a change of use. And David, you're representing the applicant?
David Clark, Clark Engineering for the record. And James Norcross, Attorney for Dre Towey, who is attending remotely. So yes, this is a proposed change of use, actually reverting back to a jelly shop. This was a jelly shop a couple owners ago. So the plan is to make improvements to the property to alleviate some, some drainage issues. And also to show where a proposed dumpster is going and have the proper enclosure. This property, along with the property next door, the Cream and Cone, have existed for over 50 years. And there really hasn't been any drainage issues up until recently. There is signs of water coming off the property and creating a little, little swell onto the Cream and Cone property. And large, that's largely due to some deficiencies in Sequantet Road. The town did put an asphalt berm over sections of it. But the northerly entrance to the property, the asphalt berm falls short. And water is, is short-circuiting the town's drainage system and getting onto this property. For years, the water just puddled down in the, or up in the northwest corner of the property at the edge of the pavement. But with that extra flow from Sequantet, it is going over the, the berm that's there and down to Cream and Cone property. This has been addressed with the Highway Department. And the Highway Department, I believe, is, is making efforts to repair their portion of, of the road. In the meantime, there are improvements that the owner wants to do, but over time. In, in the short term, I'd like to landscape out by the, out by Route 28, move the, move the business sign closer to 28, but still within the property. The parking lot hasn't been restriped in quite a long time. So that would be done initially, along with construction of the refuse area. And also restriping the, the ADA parking spaces. There's no markings there, even though the ramp is, is right there. The parking lot, as it is now, is, has served multiple businesses over the years and never been an issue with site circulation and safety. But in, in doing the parking layout, it was obvious that there's more pavement there than is needed to comply with the parking requirements as far as the alley between the, the two parking areas. So when the, the, a lot of improvements have been made in the past, such as hooking to town sewer, so you'll see a large patch in the pavement from the building all the way out to 28. A new electric service was put in a few years ago and, and a water service, and that broke up a lot of the pavement towards the south entrance. That's why you see a lot of gravel there. So the parking lot is, is, it works. It's stable at the moment, but it's in rough shape. So sometime in the future, what you'd like to do is take up the asphalt parking lot and, and put in a stone shell surface. That would definitely eliminate any drainage problems in the future. So we feel the site, as it is now, is adequate for the proposed use with the initial improvements such as striping the, the spaces. I did provide drainage calculations. And in order to contain and infiltrate a 25-year storm event, that area between the parking lot and Route 28 would be regraded and create a very shallow depression. And that's all that's needed to contain, officially contain the 25-year storm event. But being a new business owner and, and making the renovations to the building, it's a lot of money to come up with initially. And so that's why we're asking to do this in two phases. One, to get her open for the summer, which would be doing the landscaping, which is not a, a public issue as far as safety. Striping the lines in the ADA space and, and putting in the dumpster closure. So we're asking for that to be Phase 1. She gets that stuff done. We're asking that she be allowed to open, approve the change of use, and then come up with a plan as to when the additional things are going to be done. If that makes sense.
Okay, Charlene, can you give me some background on your review on this?
So the, we know that there is the existing retail, or that there's going to be the retail piece of it. The whole site, as you proposed, it would have to be done in order for her to go ahead with the, the restaurant portion of it. You can't open the restaurant without the drainage items being, everything has to be done in order to move forward with that. I've spoken with the Director of Community Development today on it. So if she wants to, if she wants to just have the first part over the summertime, if she wants to do that, that, that's fine, but she can't open the restaurant with it unless all of that grading and all of the back piece is done.
Well, that's something new. There's nothing in the bylaw that requires that.
I'm sorry, what?
That's something new to me. There's nothing in the bylaw that requires that. There's always been changes of uses in town where.
Right, but you're increasing, you're increasing the use, the, the use on the property?
We're changing the use.
You're cha, you're changing the use, but you're increasing the number of, of occupants that will be on that property?
Yeah. If you were just retaining the retail part and nothing else.
So we're saying.
You would be fine, but you're doing more than that. So therefore, that which triggers next level.
I guess just a, a couple of questions, then. I guess I'm struggling to see how the restaurant use is going to affect the drainage, which is primarily what we're talking about. And we're not saying she's not going to do it. We're just asking if there could be a set period in the future when she could do it. Again, it's really a cash flow issue. The cost outlay at the beginning is very prohibitive for a small business when it's not, again.
Again, as the, as the Director had said today, in order to move forward with that other piece of it.
Yeah.
You know, we are allowing you to, if you want to just do the retail portion, but as soon as you open up the restaurant, you're increasing the capacity on that site. And we have to make sure that everything is done. So you can't open that piece of it without it.
Right. What is that based on? I guess what I'm struggling to understand.
Right. An amendment to a, a change of use, an amendment to a site plan. So part of site plan review in this particular case, or in, in this community, is site plan review. When you change of use, then you open up, you open up that, that can of worms, basically.
No, Ann, we understand that, but I guess we're struggling to understand why that has to get done before you have a, be able to open the business. If you have a commitment to do it within a certain period of time, if it's in the regulation, that's fine, but I don't think we've seen.
Because you're going to need to utilize all of that, all of that.
All of that.
For your increased, your increased use.
So if we were just to increase the retail space in that building, what would happen?
The, the retail piece is.
No, but we'd be using more parking. That's your, we'd be increasing the use of the space. So that's the difference.
That's not what you're asking for.
Yeah. Yeah, you're asking for a, a lot more when you're talking about a 50-seat restaurant. Okay, that's, that changes quite a bit. It's no longer just retail.
What if it was, how does that impact the drainage? Somebody could explain that.
Well, we revisit the site. When we do that type of adjustment to a change, all right, we revisit, revisit the site. If you take a look at it, there's no stormwater management on the site right now. I think what David has proposed here, which is like a French drain along there and the grading off into the grass area, I think that's a, a great inexpensive approach to manage stormwater management. You're not dealing with structures or anything. I was sort of surprised that his cost for that did seem high for just some grading and then for stonewall. So he might want to go back and revisit that, that cost value there for that. But that's a relatively inexpensive component to do for managing drainage that doesn't have any right now.
Yeah, again, I believe there's no provision in the bylaw that you, that, that says that we have to do this in order to open.
Yes, there is. The bylaw says right in the first paragraph that if you change the use, you modify it, you revisit the entire site plan approval process.
Site plan review, and then the Planning Board gets to decide what happens.
That's correct.
There are dozens of businesses in this town that have changed uses and expanded uses without having to do any improvements on the property. You just approved one last time where they were able to use three parking spaces at, at the real estate office. You didn't require them to upgrade their, their parking?
That's, that's because they, they have a full set of stormwater management on that property. Okay, it really depends upon what has been previously approved. Sometimes these go back into the 1990s and there was no criteria even established for any of this.
There was. There's been a criteria since 1987. Nothing has changed in the site plan review since 1987. So when this property was approved for a jam and jelly shop, it was approved as is. And then the next owner changed the use, and it was approved as is.
Again, if you're just, if you're just going to change the retail from one to the other, I agree with you completely.
We wouldn't have to come before you if you were changing retail. Retail's retail. There's, there's no specifics. That's why Job Lot is there. It went from grocery store to Job Lot. One's considered retail, the other one's considered retail. They didn't have to do any site improvement.
Adding the restaurant component, though, is a game changer.
Oh, it is. I agree, but the Planning Board has the authority to, to ask for or waive anything they want.
Okay, but I haven't heard that you're asking us to waive anything. You're, you want to postpone it, but you can't do that, is what we're saying.
Well, you can. You're choosing not to.
You can choose not to approve it, but for the town to say it's not allowed is what I don't understand.
Yeah.
Well.
If the, if the Community Development Director says that's, it's, it's impermissible, that's why I guess I'm struggling. You could say, "We're not going to approve it." That's your discretion, but it seems like there is discretion there as opposed to an impossibility.
Well, let, let's see what some of the board members have to say associated with this, because I, I think there's no protection that anything will be done once we pass, when we approve this. And that's the concern that this board has. Unless you put a bond in place or you actually do the work before you actually open up the restaurant portion, I'm not quite sure.
Well, you could have a condition.
How we're protected.
You could have a condition. They have to come back within a certain period of time, and if they don't come back and, and conclude the work, then I imagine you can revoke that approval. I mean, I think that would provide the board with assurance that the work's going to get done. I, I understand your position. I guess you're just dealing with, my client is, is a small business owner trying to open, this is, I guess, $40,000, $50,000 to rip up the asphalt and all. David, is that the?
It was just shy of 40.
Just shy of 40? I mean, she's already done work to the building. That's a big-ticket item just to try to get open for the summer when the work can get done after that. Again, I.
So, all right, so you're requesting a waiver to phase out the, to phase out the construction, right?
Yes.
To phase out the drainage. And then you're also requesting a waiver for the two parking spaces? Or what are you doing with that?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess you should probably take a poll of the, of the board, how they want to proceed with this.
Bob, why don't you start with any comments, question?
David, you want to rip out all the asphalt and put shells in there?
In the future, yeah.
How are you going to, how are you going to delineate the, the parking places?
curb stops. I mean, wheel stops.
Okay. I don't understand. You can't find two extra parking places there?
I looked at the previous approved plan and they showed over 20 approved parking spaces on there. And I, for the life of me, could not figure out where they, where they were. They weren't shown on the plan. It was in the calculation. But they weren't.
I, I mean, I remember that when there was a, an accountant's office and they, they didn't have too much problems. Like that, that puddle has been there ever since I was born. I'm going to tell you that. I, I have, I, I like the rain garden thing, but I, I don't, I don't like taking up the asphalt and putting all crushed, crushed shells in there. I mean, I, I can get over, if you put the rain garden in and, and put the, the proposed the drain there.
French, French rain, yeah.
I don't have a problem with you leaving the asphalt, okay, until a later date. But, but you got to have the drainage in because that's part of the problem that we have here. Okay?
But that's part of our phase one.
I'd leave the asphalt alone, but put in the drain. And make sure, make sure that you hit sand in that area. We'll put sand and gravel in there. And I, I don't have a problem with that, and that's not that expensive.
Well, the, the drainage is part of Phase 1.
Okay. Is what?
Is part of Phase 1 to create that low spot.
That's what I thought you said. So why are you, why are you complaining about putting the drain in?
It's removing the pavement.
Why do you have to remove the pavement?
Because there's more pavement there than we need. And so that reduces.
Leave the pavement there for now, and then when you're ready to take it out next year or the year after, then rip the pavement out. Leave it there. What do you care?
That's what we're asking, but.
No, you're not.
We're being told it all has to be done now.
No, no.
I, I think, I think what we're looking for is if you're going to open the restaurant, you should have the drainage portion in.
Right, that's, 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 that's my thing.
Right, again.
I didn't hear incorrectly.
It's a French, it's a French drain with some grading. That's all.
All right, we're arguing over, okay, yeah.
Okay, as far as the pavement, I don't care. Line it out and use it for the year or next year or whatever, and just leave it. Now, out back. Now, outback, is outback already there? Parking outback?
It, it's scattered. It, it was never, well, it has, because of the discontinuous use, there's, there's no visible signs of, of the limits of that that was approved the last time around.
Well, why don't you, why don't you concentrate instead of digging the pavement up? Shells are expensive, okay?
Yeah.
So what, what you can do without the shells, you can, you can put the shells outback if you want. I don't care. But delineate the back parking lot, okay, and put the drain in, and don't worry about the asphalt. You wanna put an island in here, or is that gonna be removed?
That's, that's to be removed. That's part of the future plans.
Well, just, just put some barrels or something in there with trees or flowers on it for now. If, if, if the food's good and people wanna go there, they don't care about the asphalt. They don't care about anything like that, okay? So, so instead of spending their money stupidly by ripping the asphalt out and putting shells there, okay, and then, and then worrying about the drainage later, put the drain in, fix the back parking lot, and I don't think we're gonna have a problem with it.
I thought that's what I said at the beginning.
So did I, but I don't, somehow I mixed up.
No, I interpreted it different. I, I apologize for that.
It's not your fault, but it wasn't quite.
We do have the applicant and we do have the Director of Community Development who would like to speak.
Okay, so.
That's okay.
Let's, uh, let's go, uh, to the applicant first.
Thank you. Um, so.
State, state your name for the record, please.
My name's Grace Howie. I am the owner of sixteen Saquonset Road. What my concern is that a lot of the water is coming from Saquonset. So I would like to see how a berm, a new berm replaced by the town would help with the drainage there. It's gonna, it, it's gonna emit a lot of the water that's coming into the parking lot. And that's why I wanted to do it in phases, because I, I really think the berm should be replaced first. I don't want to rip up anything. I'd like to keep it the way it is. But, because it was really expensive, asphalt's more expensive than stone and shell, and I thought stone and shell natural, um, parking lot would help with drainage, because obviously the water can, um, be absorbed. Um, but I think the first thing that needs to happen is that Chatham, um, Highway Division needs to fix the berm before anything needs to be done. Because we're, we're kinda jumping ahead of ourselves here. You know, David drew a really beautiful plan. It's not something I'm ready to execute right now. It did suggest water, rain barrels, um, around the Saquonset property, around the house to collect any rain that's coming from the gutters. But from what I can see, and I have video footage of it, the, the rain, the water's coming from Saquonset Road. And I, I shouldn't be held responsible for that.
That's something I think that the board, the board can reach out to the DPW Director and seek if they could, uh, provide some relief in that avenue. But that's.
Yeah, I worked with them also, and, and they agreed. They went out and looked at the property, and they, they said that they would address it.
Okay, thank you. Katie, would you like to, uh, pipe in a little bit on this?
Sure. I think, um, just how it had been explained to me was a little bit different. I didn't realize that the, um, the drainage area in the front was part of the initial plan. Um, but I think that if it was phased, um, and there were conditions on that phasing, I think that, that's something that, that could certainly be done, um, if the board's willing to, based on the conversation that's been had.
Bob?
I, I understand that Saquonset Road drains onto this property. And I, I, I'm gonna say that the town probably should put a berm on it for you. But that's still not gonna take all the water that's gonna fall on there, uh, naturally, even if you put a berm on. So yes, that, that does affect your drainage.
Yep.
But you still have to put the drain in. You don't have to take the asphalt up and fix the back, the, okay? And then when you put in, put in, uh, uh, shells, you need to make sure that you put in six-foot aprons. And if you crown the aprons, that'll stop the water from coming in. So I, I don't, I don't have a problem with what they wanna do. Just leave the asphalt, put, put the drain in, fix the back, and that's it. And when the town puts a berm in, hopefully they roll berm it so that they don't have a speed bump there.
Yep.
They're asking me to spend thirty thousand dollars to fix something before it's even been addressed by the town. The town needs to address the berm first, so we can really see where the water's from.
Then, then we can't approve your plan until the berm's in. So, uh, what, what do you want us to do? Put the berms, if the town puts a berm in and, and you put the drain in and you fix the back, we'll, we'll approve it. So that means you're gonna have to come back until the town can pave.
I think what we're looking for is have the applicant address their pieces, and the town will need to have just theirs when they, when they, um, when the DPW puts that on their agenda to do that work.
Correct.
I think, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, if we could just clarify what, I think it'd be helpful for Andrea as well, since she's not here. Just clarify what the proposed phase one would be, the extent of that work, and then I guess we're kind of on the same page as to what we're talking about.
Could we, could we just call it, uh, the job and not a second phase?
Sure, the job. We'll call it the job, sorry. Just the scope of the job, so we're all on the same, uh, cause I'm, I'm confused. I just wanna make sure, probably some of you folks are confused as well as to what we're, what the proposal would be.
That's you, David. Your plan.
So what I gather from the board is that you want drainage put in, uh, it's part of.
David, when you say drainage, remember now, we're, we're not talking structures.
Not structures.
Okay, we're talking.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
We're talking, we're talking a French drain stone, like you, they tell there, you've identified it, and you're doing a grading, so that, that is, uh, an, a little low spot area. And again, that's low already, so this is just moving a little bit of material around.
The, the problem with that is a portion of that area, about a third of it, is within the existing pavement.
Yeah.
So we'd have to take the pavement up to accomplish.
That would be a big dud, David. You're taking it out, that part, okay? We understand that.
Okay.
Put the drain in, take that piece of pavement out that you, okay? Put the drain in, then, then, then.
So when we're saying drainage, we're, we're talking about this landscape depression.
Rain. Yes, the landscape depression.
Rain garden.
That's all you're showing for drainage, and that's acceptable, is what we're saying.
Okay, as long as the French drain piece is included is what you're looking for.
We don't really care about the French.
Yeah, and, and.
It's more of a sediment trap and.
It's more of a sediment trap, is all it is. It's, it's a, it's a width and a depth of gravel stone. That's all it is.
Yep. So.
We're not touching the parking other than it's gonna get restripped.
It's gonna be. I, I would stripe it, so you'd know where the cars are going.
In order for this to work, some of the pavement has to come up.
David.
No, no, I'm, that's what I'm.
Come on now.
Not arguing, I'm just making the statement, yeah.
Yes, it does have to come up.
But that isn't part of your dri- your driveway any, uh, plans anyway, right? It's, it's, it's stuff that's paved now that doesn't need to be paved or, or have, um,
Shells on it.
Shells on it or anything.
Right. Right.
Okay. Is it, is it possible to do it outside the pavement, or is that?
It's not enough room.
It's not enough room.
Would have to go deeper.
You're never gonna use that piece no matter what, except for drainage. You're not gonna re-shell it. You're not gonna repark it. You're not gonna do anything there, so.
Okay. Alright. And as, as far as at the rear of the building, you just need to delineate the fi- the five spaces.
That's all you have to do there.
Scrape, scrape it out, David. Scrape it out and put either stone or shells on it.
It's probably something underneath the ground.
Right, so just, just scrape it out and make it, uh, cut the outlines of it.
Yep.
So, so it is what it, what it was normally or what it's gonna be, and then just put some stone or shells. Stone is less money than shells, just so you know.
Okay.
I don't care what you put, but I'm just telling you, if you want economically.
Would you hold our feet to the fire if it was stone?
I don't care what it is.
We're talking about stone, shell, or a combination of both.
There's some in the back already, so.
Do whatever.
Yep.
He's driving from that either, right?
Well, I'll be.
Oh, yes, the parking.
Employees will be back there.
Oh, their parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And there's a walkway and stuff, that's fine. It can be either or. How's that?
We like the flexibility.
It can be just dirt, but you're gonna get muddy.
Well, how about if we refer to it as previous pavement, alright?
Okay, alright.
And then, and then at some point.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
David, at some point, when, when the, uh, berm goes by, then you can delineate the aprons at your will. If there's a bump or something, just have them, when they go by, just have them knock it down a little bit or, but delineate the aprons you want. And, and, uh, if the town's really good to you, they'll, they'll, uh, they'll put a little backing on it, so you don't have too big a bump.
Okay. So. You're gonna wanna see a revised plan, obviously. We only have one meeting in May, and then we'd like.
What's the matter with this plan, David?
Okay.
Yep, this, this plan is delineating.
It has basically everything you want on it.
Yep.
I mean, crushed shells, surface of stone, or, you know, just leave the asphalt alone.
We're not touching the asphalt, except for the French drain.
Now, in this, in, in some time in the future, if you wanna take it out, go ahead.
Okay.
You wanna open it up, that's the least, least thing we expect to have happen, so she can open her restaurant up.
Drainage, striping, refuse area, delineate the.
Rain barrels.
Oh, the rain barrels.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, and the other thing we would be doing is we'd waive the other two parking.
Yes, please, we'd be asking for that.
But we're waiving two parking. We are?
Well, I think, I think there's other locations around this site where you can park if, if they were, if you take a look at the existing condition plan. Uh, so I didn't have any problem myself when I looked at this site. If we waived the, the other two parking spaces.
You guys feel about that?
They can park wherever they, they can get access.
Yeah, I didn't see any problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Fine. There you go.
So. Is that, is that something that we can, uh, make a motion on to, uh, this one would be. Alright, so I think we should start by making a motion on waiving two parking spaces.
I think Andrea has something.
Oh.
I just wanna add that it's a coffee house. It's not a restaurant, and I hope I see you all for coffee.
Oh, there we go.
Wait a minute, what time do you open? If, if you open, it's, it's six o'clock. I'll be there, but if not, I, I go to work early.
He's the only guy you see in Dunkin's at six o'clock and, sitting in the back.
Yeah, they took my restaurant away, Larry's. So.
Alright. Alright, so I move that we waive the two parking spaces.
Okay, so, Warren has got one more question.
I just have one question for David. David, in your opening remarks, I believe I heard you say you'd had some discussion with the DPW about the berm.
No, uh, uh, Andrew Howie did.
Our client had discussions with, uh, the DPW Director.
Okay, and, and what was the result of that? Not in our lifetime, or?
No, I think they were actively looking at it. So they were gonna, Andrea, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe he said he was looking into it, and they were gonna put it on their list for something that needs to be corrected.
They, they were, they were going to deal with it as soon as possible. Um, they had a hard look at it, and they did say that a lot of the water was coming off of Saquonset.
Yeah, I was very surprised when they were paving, uh, Pondview Avenue, they didn't bring a couple of wheelbarrows down here and fix, fix that.
But my thing is, my thing is, I see a lawyer and an engineer here. If I was the town, I'd be a little nervous about getting a couple of letters. Let's move on here.
Okay, so I got a motion to waive the two parking spaces.
I second it.
Alright, Warren.
Chain, approve.
Bob, worship, approve.
Bob, do us approve.
And Art Spur, I approve.
Yeah, wait, okay, for the waivers. Now, I, I gotta bring this up, because the last time I did, it cost me a lot. Are we gonna ask for a bond for this?
Okay.
And, and I hate to, I hate to say it, even a small bond, because the last time we didn't give a bond, we got, uh, we got taken to the cleaners, so.
I would suggest a small bond.
Okay.
Uh, not, not the, not the level of what was indicated by the applicant, cause I just didn't see that value of work there.
The, may I speak to that?
Yeah.
Uh, the drainage that's on the official, uh, estimate is for those drainage structures that were shown on the first plan.
Uh, the first plan that was never part of this.
Uh, we were true, yeah.
That's what I thought. Uh, I, that's why I thought that that number was, was high.
I, I would recommend five hundred bucks.
Five hundred?
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, only just something.
Really?
Well, what do you want me to say? Five thousand, twenty-five thousand?
I mean, for five hundred dollars, if that's, I, it just doesn't seem worth it to anybody to have a bond for five hundred dollars, I'm sorry.
Well, David, how, how much you figure it's gonna put the rain garden in?
It's primarily landscaping.
Landscaping, right, yeah.
That's not the question.
I like your five hundred dollars.
Listen, I, you know.
If that's. Well, we've got two thousand in there for landscaping.
Alright.
Right.
Why don't we get a thousand dollar bond?
Okay.
We're trying to be easy, okay? I mean, our job is to make, make it work.
Yep.
I'm sorry I'm yapping, but I'm gonna get going.
Well, that's.
Alright, so, oh, boy. So, for the conditions approval for the site plan, this would be the physical features, da- uh, data shown on the existing condition plan and on site plan one and two dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, prepared by, by Clark Engineering. And the condition two is certification by licensed, uh, professional that all site work is complete in compliance with the, with the plan. Those are the only two conditions.
And the thousand dollar bond.
And the thousand dollar bond.
So, in other words, rain garden.
Right.
Fix the back so it looks like a parking lot.
That's correct.
Stripe it.
Mm-hmm. That's right. That's it.
And bug the town.
And bug the town, right.
Okay.
You don't have to put bug the town in, in the condition.
No.
Can I just make the motion?
Yes, please. I move that we do just what was suggested. Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Alright, Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob worship.
After approve. Bob, do us approve.
And Art Spur, I approve.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks for your patience. Alright. Next is Evergreen, this is release of covenant, Evergreen Lane, uh, drainage and subdivision. Let's see, we have, oh, David, yes, welcome back. Alright, uh, by the way, it was an excellent site visit that we had. I think we resolved a lot of things. I think you put it together very well. Why don't you, uh, walk us through?
Uh, David Clark, for the record, on behalf of Susan Shepard and Barry Payne, who are in the audience. I would agree, that was a, a, a good, uh, site visit, one of the better ones I've had in a long time. So, uh, as requested, um, at that site visit, uh, I, I put together, uh, a timeline on how I feel this should proceed in accordance with the subdivision control law. Um, so we would, uh, get an understanding tonight that, uh, that the twelve feet of, uh, traveled way is adequate for, for one more dwelling on, on this subdivision. Uh, with the clearing of the roadway width to eighteen feet, which is twelve feet of pavement and two foot shoulders and, and one foot berms. And that would be sufficient for a lot to be released for sale. There were a lot of concerns, and I have the same concerns, the, that, uh, house construction on that lot will, um, uh, be detrimental to the road, and, uh, before the house, um, a building permit is issued for the house, that a bond be posted, uh, for the repair of the road. And that would be to, uh, repave it to twelve feet in width, and, uh, and, uh, if necessary, regrade the, the shoulders and, and loam and seed the shoulders, so that, uh, when the house, uh, occupancy permit is issued, the road is done, has been repaired, and, uh, the bond would be released. when the house occupancy permit is issued, the road is done, has been repaired, and, uh, the bond would be released. In order to do that, uh, the covenant would have to be amended. And, and what I was proposing is to add, uh, two additional line, line items to the covenant. In addition to one through six that's already on the covenant, uh, number seven would be, Lot One B may be sold upon the posting of a bond, Bond A, as required in the Statement of Conditions. And number eight would be upon the posting of Bond B, Lot One B shall be released from the covenant in its entirety. That way they can get a building permit. And then the Statement of Conditions for this modification, Lot One B shall be the subject, shall be subject to the terms of the covenant. Lot One B may be, may be sold upon the posting of Bond, Bond A. Bond A shall be for the improvements to Evergreen Way, which include removal of trees to a clear width of fourteen feet. I said eighteen feet before, so I could fix that. Installation of drainage system shown on the approved road construction plans, entitled blank, because I haven't prepared them yet. Lot One shall, Lot One B shall not be constructed upon and no building permit shall be issued until such time as Bond B is posted for the reconstruction of Evergreen Way, as shown on the approved road construction plans. And then, as an added, um, protection to the planning board, added number four, the term of Bond B for, shall be for two years from the date of the bond's submission. I didn't, again, the numbers don't match. Uh, after five years, the owner shall provide the planning board with a new construction estimate. Planning Board reserves the right to require additional bond to cover the increase in construction cost due to inflation.
Yeah, the, the proposed Statement of Conditions and, and your suggestions here are all good. We'll, we'll ref, make sure we finesse these the right way.
Absolutely.
Right, but we do appreciate you proposing them all for us. I think, go ahead, David.
On the plan that was provided for the first meeting, I did show a drainage area at the bottom of the slope. It's shown on the plan there on the screen. It's roughly a hundred square foot area.
Hundred foot square, yeah.
And I did do the, since last, last week, I did run the stormwater calculations and then that is, if it's three feet deep, it's plenty deep for a fifteen year storm event, which I believe is, is what the planning board approved.
Back then, yes.
So, uh, so with that understanding, um, we would like to come back, um, officially file for the modification.
Right.
That starts the public hearing process.
That's correct.
Your next meeting is in the middle of May. I don't think there's enough time to legally advertise that as a, as a public hearing.
We have added a special meeting on May nineteenth, but we've already put in the, um, the legal ads for that had to be in on Friday, so we would have to look at the June meeting.
Okay.
Um, in order to do this. And the other thing is, we would need you to just, um, give us a letter indicating that you'd like to withdraw the release of the covenant request, because you're gonna put in the amendment.
Um. If we have an understanding, uh, tonight on the, the road requirement for, for the first phase, that Bond A, which is clearing it to the fourteen or eight, uh, fourteen feet is what we talked about on site, and putting in the drainage, um, depending on what that estimate comes in and, on the applicant might just go ahead and do that work.
Right.
And then we would ask for the release, but we would have to modify the subdivision first.
Yes.
So, uh, I'd like to, well, we, I, I think I gave a sixty day extension. So, uh, come June ninth, um, we might be able to have the board act upon, approve the modification and act upon the release, the release of the newly approved modification. I'd like to keep that open in short, short words. So I'm not asking the, the board to act on the covenant tonight.
Okay, so we're gonna continue this. No, we won't continue this. We're going to actually make, uh, I guess what I'd like to do is get support from the board on the steps that are outlined here in the letter from, uh, from Clark Engineering.
The only issue I have is it does not mention the drainage in that letter. You, you talk about reduc, uh, the pavement, but you don't actually, in this letter, say anything about the drainage.
It's, it's in the proposed Statement of Conditions.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
Yep. So the, I would think that that would be the first step, is that we're acknowledging and accepting this as the, uh, an, an acceptable procedure for resolving this. And that'll at least give you an indication that the board is, uh.
Right.
Sort of set your wheels in motion to continue.
We understand that you can't say, officially say yes.
Right.
Until the, the modification is a public hearing and it's, 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 legally, yeah.
Uh, I guess I'll make a motion that, uh, the board, um, use the recommendations, support the recommendations outlined in the letter from Clark Engineering on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, with the added provision of drainage just to be included.
You can't make the motion.
No, I was saying.
I, I'll make that motion.
That's right. I was outlining it.
I'll second it.
Okay, Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wurzhefter, approve.
Bob Dubus, approve.
And Art Spur, I approve.
Gotta be a little quicker, Warren.
Yeah. So, this was a, a good summary. Thanks for that. We'll be using a lot of this for our, our conditions in, in your modification. You come forward on the, on the ninth then.
Okay.
So the engineer has requested that we keep the, the rele, the release of covenant open.
Open at this time.
Do you want to vote on that as well? Do you want to just continue it, or do you wanna continue it to a date?
You said in June something?
Well, June ninth.
June ninth. I move that we, uh, keep the, uh, release open until the June ninth.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Release, release of the covenant open until June ninth. Release of the covenant.
I'll second it.
All right, Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wurzhefter, approve.
Bob Dubus, approve.
And Art Spur, I approve. All right. All right, let's, let's just see if David's got anything else.
So, Susan makes a good question.
Okay, go ahead.
So right now, um, there is a Statement of Conditions and a Covenant. So, uh, under that, in the previous planning board approval, there's no reason why we can't go out there and take the trees down that need to be taken down to get to the.
That's correct.
And install the drainage.
That's correct.
For the June ninth meeting.
All right. I just didn't wanna.
Yeah, it would help if you had it done before June nineteenth.
June ninth.
June ninth.
Yes. June ninth, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, that's correct. I don't think that was ever off the table. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Uh, next we have a continued public hearing for the adoption of a change of zoning ordinance by law, citizen petition, impact Chatham permitted uses within the Conservancy District. It's continued from March twenty-fourth and April fourteenth. That, you have some updates for us on this?
Good afternoon. I submitted updates to the planner last week and it takes out the language that you were concerned with.
It's not in the warrant, but it's, this is what you're gonna read at the, at the meeting?
Yes, I've already provided it to the moderator who, um, will guide me through the process of amending on town meeting floor.
I would think we should clarify that this is what we're making a recommendation on, okay? Because it's, it's different than the original petition that we, we received. So, any other comments or questions from the board members?
No. Can I move we close the?
So what I would say, what I would say to you, this was a new, um, he's adding a Section M to the proposed bylaw and based on the, the questions that were asked at the last meeting, the applicant or the petitioner, um, added the words of stormwater management systems two. And then he took out, um, from his original application, including the excavation filling and regarding if, as necessary to direct. So the entire thing that you are, are, that you will be making your recommendation on is the revised one, which is Section M, the construction, maintenance, and improvement of stormwater management systems to treat and infiltrate stormwater runoff into stormwater drainage systems provided these systems are designed, reviewed, and approved pursuant to Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, MGL, Chapter Twenty-One, Sections Twenty-Six through Fifty-Three, MGL, Chapter One Thirty-One, Section Forty, the Town of Chatham Wetlands Bylaw, Chapter Two Seventy-Two, the Town of Chatham Stormwater Management Bylaw, Chapter Two Thirty-Eight, and the various regulations proclamated, I can never say that word.
Proclamate, yeah.
Therefrom. We have, we have reached out to town council about this. The recommendation that you make to the select board, you can, um, we'll be reaching out to the moderator, that it can be read into the record as, as you've seen it, as you've, um, with the changes in mind. But those changes will have to be brought up at town meeting.
At town meeting, no.
Applicant.
I move that we approve this new, that we vote, um, I guess for a positive support of this bylaw amendment as written in the April twenty-fourth revised.
Well, I think, um, we're still in an open public hearing.
You ask, we have to close the public.
So first thing, first thing we have to do. And I, I wanna just clarify, if there's any comments by the public, uh, I want to, uh, just ask for that. I don't see anything here, so then do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Before you second that, I wanna tell you that I'm against this, just so you know.
Okay.
Do whatever you want.
That's okay. But.
We still have.
Do I, do we have a motion to?
Close the public meeting.
No, I second.
Okay. So, uh, this motion on the floor to, to, uh, close the public hearing. Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Uh, Bob Wurzhefter?
Bob Wurzhefter, approve.
Bob Dubus, approve.
And Art Spur, I approve. Okay, so now we have a discussion and about whether we make a recommendation for this.
Because, uh, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of this because of how much water that I see all around the place and things that go on. I don't want to create multi-multi-stuff, uh, be, to be able to drain water into some area. I just, uh, I, I'm just against it, I'm sorry. I, I, I see places that have been run, have had runoff for all my life. I don't see any difference in it. I see the town do it all the time. I see people do it all the time. He, he, this just puts another restraint on stuff that I think should be left alone.
Yeah, 'cause again, this is predominantly in the Conservancy District.
This is my feeling, you guys, if you wanna wait and vote on this when there's more, uh, players here, that's fine. It's, it's only my opinion.
Right, well, right now, we won't have another meeting before town meeting, so we'll need to make our vote, you know, either positive or, or negative associated with this.
Well, well.
Tonight.
And you're making this, you're making this vote without, you know, you could do it with what you've got here, the number of people you have here, so you don't have, don't feel as though you have to do it.
So you can do it with what, if you can, you can pass it, you can pass it. I'm just telling you that I'm not in favor of it.
Bob Wurzhefter?
Well, I'd like to hear a little bit more. I mean, this is an area that he has much more expertise than I do, so. My concern all, all along was it would allow, um, development in this area that probably wouldn't have been allowed under the old agreement. It might, it might fix some issues, but I, I agree with, with Bob that most of the drainage issues have been there, they're not gonna get better, they're just gonna get worse. And, and the idea that, um, we can do some things to fix it probably in my, where in my mind, we probably should just not be doing anything there at all. So I, I tend to agree with, uh, with Bob on this, that I'd rather not give, uh, uh, opportunities to start developing pools or whatever it is, because they couldn't do it before. But now, if they put in a little stormwater, they might be allowed to put in a pool where I don't think there should be any pools.
Warren, you have any thoughts on this?
Well, only I'm been under a different, um, assumption as to what this proposal would, would essentially facilitate. I understood that, um, that common sense solutions to a drainage issue in the Conservancy, uh, is prohibited under current bylaw and regulations. And that, um, if common sense suggested that, um, a solution for any given proposal, um, came forward, that there would be a way in that situation to facilitate it. Not that it requires, um, a drainage plan for every proposal that might come along, but only that, um, this would provide an avenue for permitting something which is now prohibited, which might well be considered common sense and kind of a no-brainer for a given situation in the future. I certainly don't, uh, I, I certainly never understood that this was going to create a requirement to have a zoning drainage plan as part of a proposal, um, in the Conservancy District. But only that to the extent that drainage could be facilitated by whatever means is appropriate in a given applicant's proposal, that there'd be a way to allow it to happen, um, as opposed to having absolutely everything prohibited. If that's a misunderstanding, then I, uh, I think I'd go along with the way Bob is feeling about it.
I, I, I think you're, you're, the intention is what you said. My concern is how very, um, you know, well-informed lawyers and others will be able to make it something else.
Yeah.
And that's my concern, is that, uh, I don't wanna open up any avenue for any kind of development that wasn't allowed before. And I just don't know that this protects that. I, I agree with you that if we were all, oh, listen, this is a really, I can do this thing, it makes sense, it's simple, uh, it will improve the property. Maybe sometimes that should be done, but my, my inclination is to just make it as, as difficult as possible to develop in those areas, and I'm not sure this is, is in that, moving in that direction.
Okay, Bob Dubus?
Listen, I, I, I don't wanna sway you to what my thinking is, okay? This is to, that if, if you're having stormwater runoff, you have to treat it, okay? And so you can come up with some elaborate treatment part, and, and that's what I'm against. I'm not against putting water, stormwater here and there. I'm just, the way it goes in. So I would, I would vote to have no comment on this to, to town meeting. And I know that that's, but, but I cannot put my, I can't do it in approval on, for me, and I'm sorry that there's not enough members here.
Right.
Vote against me.
Right.
I, this is only my view and, and my reasoning. I don't wanna put it on you guys to do that. If you feel different, vote different. Uh, I'm, I'm just sorry that, that we don't have enough to override, override me.
Right. I, I have always been uncomfortable with this. I wanted to wait and hear where, the way this was developing. I mean, I take a look at this and when, when I. I mean, I take a look at this and when, when I, if you notice, when I review these, these properties that come before us, and they come before us, the residential properties, they come before the ZBA and Conservation Commission, and we comment on one thing, a driveway. That's it. That's all we comment on. But one of the things I take a look at, and just about every one of these sites is in the floodplain. And I, I look at every one of the FEMA maps and I see, gee, this entire site is in the floodplain. I'm not quite sure what benefit this is going to do, or how it's actually going to be managed, or how it's going to be dealt with, and who's going to oversee it and all this part of the process. We're, as a planning board, we will not be the reviewer of this particular piece. I certainly, if I was going to be introducing this, I would want to first do my homework and find out who is going to be the entity that want, is going to have oversight on this, get their input associated with this directly with us, and have them give us some guidance on whether they think that this is a good thing or not, or would they do something slightly different? I'm not sure we had any of that input on this, so I'm hesitant about making a recommendation for this one, the way it is at this point in time. Not to say that this should go away forever, it just needs to be, perhaps be worked through a little bit more and vetted. So I, I would almost agree with, with some of the things that Bob and Bob, that you're saying, that at this point, I think it's better if we don't give a positive recommendation on this. Well, no, we'll.
You can't give a.
Well, we'll give a positive recommendation on it and we could vote against it, okay?
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yep.
Believe me, I'm sorry.
Katie has her hand up.
Oh, thank you. Katie, do you have some input?
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to make sure that the vote was made in the affirmative.
Affirmative.
The motion was made in the, I'm sorry, the motion was made in the affirmative for.
Okay.
The recommendation, and then the board members to vote which way, whichever way they want.
So with that, make a, go ahead.
I also saw that the petitioner had his hand up.
Uh, yes, but we've closed the hearing.
Oh, okay.
So.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just, just so that you're aware, the board is allowed to ask questions of the petitioner, and it's up to the chair, because it's his petition, you are, you are allowed to ask questions and, and if he wants to speak. I don't know if he can do a rebuttal, but at this point in time, he could make a comment if you, as the chair would allow it.
I, I would think that at this point, I think we would like to just continue the direction that we're heading in. I'm not quite sure that we're going to resolve anything unless the board members are interested in that.
I'm okay with letting that.
Okay. Dad?
Thank you.
Do you have a question that?
I revised, I revised this based upon our previous conversations. I see no reason to revise it if you're not going to give me support.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that would be.
Positive.
Then essentially, he's reverting back to the previous.
I move, I, I move a motion that we vote to support this bylaw amendment in its original form.
Okay.
As submitted by the citizen's petition.
Citizen's petition, who that group, I forget the group. All right. Do I have a second?
Well, I'll second.
Okay. So, Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus votes no.
Bob Werchafter?
No.
Warren Chain?
I guess I have to go along with the no as well.
Okay, and Artsbri, I vote no also. I think this is something that can be worked on and perhaps resolved at a future point with a little bit more coordination. We'll see. So we'll make zero, four recommendation on this at town meeting. All right, so that leaves us with long-range planning with the West Chadam Neighborhood Center.
No, you want to talk about Penrose first.
Oh, excuse me. My mistake. All right. This is what we've learned on Penrose, that we're not going to, my advice is not to discuss or make a recommendation tonight. The, the plan that is being developed and introduced at the zoning board of appeals will be on May 8th, and there's going to be multiple steps of reviews that will happen on this. The next major point after that first introduction on the ZBA on the 8th will be June 5th. So that gives us time to actually take a look at the documents. I just got my set today, and they are different than what we had previously seen. I think it would be a good idea if all the board members took a look at these, at these documents, and then we discuss this and make a recommendation to the ZBA on our May 12th meeting. So I would defer any, any real discussion tonight until, until that point.
You're, you're saying, I thought, you, you just got your documents?
I just received them myself.
So I'm, I'm being, so now you want to discuss this on May 12th?
May 12th. I, I want all the board members to get their particular copy of it.
That's a short, that's like two weeks, correct?
Right, it is, but we, we don't have a choice because of, of the way the meeting schedule is to have it any other time in order to get the comments to the ZBA. So you will get, you will get the, the documents.
I, I thought you were going to say, well, we, we could wait like a month or some, discuss it a few more times.
No.
That's all. I'm just making sure.
No, I.
Trying to be clear about this.
The, the ZBA has their process, but they're going to be looking for a recommendation from us.
So you're going to listen to them, in theory, you can listen to their meeting on the 8th.
On the 8th, yeah.
Okay.
You know, remotely, and then over the summer, they're going to have multiple meetings going through. You know, one meeting might be dedicated to drainage, another meeting might be dedicated to.
That's what confuses me that you.
Is, so we're going to give you general comments by the 12th.
Okay.
I can get the packet, the packet of just that, that portion of materials out to the Dropbox for you. You know, within the next day or two, you can get the full package, so you can start looking at them at your leisure.
I just, you just struck me when you got yours, that, that, you know, all of a sudden.
Well, because they had come.
Which is fine, which, I just want to know that, you know, it was going to be that early.
Yeah, so they had, they had come in last, last week prior, after, or prior, just prior to our agenda. And then we had gotten an email from the liaison to the ZBA saying to hold off on the review. We didn't need to have the review thing, so that's why we didn't include them in your package. And then now we've learned today of their plan going forward, so.
Okay.
Well, without discussing what they've presented to you that you haven't had a chance to look at yet. Is it your understanding that they have attempted to address some of the concerns that were raised in their presentation here? Or it, that would be?
I don't know that they have, and that's why I need to take a closer look at it. I've, I've only had a chance to glance at it for about an hour or so far. And, and I knew that we were going to be postponing this, and I, and I would hope that on the 12th we'll have more members of our board to provide input, so that would be helpful too.
Do we have to make any motions or anything?
I don't, I don't believe we do. Yeah.
I, I would say to, just to continue it, just to be safe, it's always better to make motions, so continue it to the May 12th meeting.
And if we move this discussion to the May 12th meeting?
Uh, I move. I move that we move this discussion to the, postpone this discussion till the.
And the recommendation.
And recommendation till the May 12th meeting.
I second that.
Okay, Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Werchafter?
Bob Werchafter, approve.
Bob Dubus, approve.
And Artsbri, approve. Okay, so that leaves us with the long-range planning for the West Chadam Neighborhood Center. Now, I'll be honest with you, Charlene and I have, I mean, Christine and I have not had as much time as I would like to, to put into this piece on this. That's probably going to be my major effort with her this week. The, we'll need to have our slides ready for Monday. And then, but the, the narrative and text of what we'll be saying, we'll be working on right up until the day before, before town meeting. So this is just an outline of some of the things that we're thinking of. One of the things I was thinking of is, is it probably on item five is where I thought we should not avoid some of the things that we were, we found that were important to deal with, and we, I thought we successfully have addressed many of these things. How we go about introducing them, I still want to work on. So that's going to be my homework with Christine for the rest of this week and next week. Please, go ahead, Warren.
I would only suggest that you try and mirror the, the flow and the points that are in the video.
Video, yeah.
And, you know, adding items that are not in the video, since to create a problem, not a solution to me. I thought the video was really very well done, and basically covers what we want it to cover.
Right.
And there's things you could add to it. I mean, we have four years' worth of discussion going on here, so there's always things that you could put in. I even wondered whether someone like the select board could ask that we show the video during the meeting. We can't ask for that because everybody and their brother would be looking to have videos shown up all the time.
We have asked about showing the video, and we're not allowed.
You know, but if the town manager and the select board decided this is something that should be shown, well, that's, gee, reluctantly, we might have to agree.
And I think, doesn't the town moderator actually, that, that's his prerogative, right? Yes, okay. That's.
No, and.
So we're just as, and the select board are just as limiting.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question.
Yes.
When the video is done, would it be possible to show it over the T, over our, our television?
Well, I think it's available right now.
Pardon?
I think it's, you have a link.
It's available, and it's been being shown.
Okay, okay.
On YouTube, and then I don't know if.
Yeah, but, and you do have to go look for it.
Yes, yes, Mark is saying, yes, it is being shown on our TV as well.
And the reason I mention it at all is.
Was there any advertising on that, like in the Chronicle?
Well, we were late with trying to put the pieces together. I mean, unfortunately.
Are you telling me that you were busy?
Yeah.
Really?
Well, and the only reason I bring it up is, one, it's a very good video.
It worked out better than I was hoping for, yeah.
It boils down, four years' worth of discussion into something that I think is intelligible. But the, the several, I'll say it that way, the several discussions I've had with people that I didn't even bring up, but of people who know I'm on the planning board, have talked about the annual meeting, and this, and the size of the warrant, and this, that, and the other. In those discussions I've had, no one has even been aware of the fact that there is a proposed zoning bylaw.
Yep.
Far less have any understanding of what's in it. And my guess is that it may well be the majority of the people that are at the meeting may not have digested it. And that video, I thought, gee, you know, even if it's right at the meeting, would be very helpful.
You know, it's.
Again, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, and I certainly don't want to set up a situation where every proposal that's going to be in town meeting is now going to have a video in front of it forever. It's only that it's, it's well done, and, and seems to me would be of value to a lot of people that are going to vote at the meeting.
Yep. Well, it's, it sort of was surprising to me that we, since we started just with this form-based zoning, there has been 20 outreach meetings with the public on this, so it's, but it was over a four-year period of time. And that's, that's part of a challenge that we had for us. And we got down to the wire with a lot of pushing by me to try to get this so that we could get it on this annual town meeting. And so far, we have not had as many comments as I was wondering if there, there might be. Now, if they come out on town meeting floor, that's something I'm not sure how we can, can respond to if we have an opportunity to. So I'm hoping that all, all your board members will be there together with us to.
Just going to play it by ear.
Yeah.
Play it by ear.
Are we allowed to sit together at the town meeting, or is that a violation of?
No, it's.
We're going to advertise you as having a meeting, so that you can be together.
We'll be posted.
If we need to.
Yeah, and I, I would like to have that because in case something comes up with some comment on the public, a brief caucus might be something that would be helpful if we have an opportunity to respond. And so I certainly would like that input. So the, the more we're together for, it's Article 39 and 40, that's, that's all we need to be together for.
I can suggest that I, I can ask tomorrow about possibly putting something in the Chronicle for next week, advertising the video, and then we can ask again about putting the video out there. I don't know that it would, you know, that anybody's mind is going to change, but we can do that. Roughly, the, the time period that Art has to speak is about the same amount of time as, as the video. Five minutes, four or five minutes.
Four or five minutes, is all they're going to give us.
Yeah, well, I would emphasize that you, there's a lot of stuff on here that I would just not worry about, A1, A2, AB, and that stuff.
Okay.
I'd go right to the visualization study.
Okay.
Show it, show why it's good, show what it's, it's mixed modal, it's, it's got controls. It, it, it's got our form base code that we've been working on, that everyone is, is adopting. It is, it bans single-family developments. It, it's got, we've dealt with the runway protection, I mean, definitely address these.
And short-term rentals.
And short-term rentals, and.
That's right.
Make sure that you have a, it, we've taken care of all of that. But I would just show them this picture of this way that we want this, this is what we were envisioning. This is a, this is everything we've talked about, and.
So a lot of the recommendations on here are recommendations that Katie has made based on other, other town meeting things that she's here in town, but. What I would say to you, I, I would, I would say, as you guys read all of this tonight or tomorrow or whatever, if you want to send an email to me with any other things that you might think of, that would be fabulous, because.
Because nobody knows this, you have five minutes to, to describe it. Describe, if you start getting in all these details, nobody, they want to know why we're, why we spent four years.
Doing this, yeah.
Doing this, and why it's important, and, and I think that, and what it doesn't do. Those are the two areas, why, why we went out, what, what it's going to do, and that visualization is the best means of doing that.
Yeah, I, I thought some of the things that I heard from Katie today, and I had Christine put it down, these are predictable outcomes with design guidelines. That's what this bylaw is doing, which is, which is different than the other bylaws that we have in place associated with development like this. So this, I hope, is a template of how we want a village center to be, and it'll give it an easier piece of information for an applicant who comes forward and says, we're doing a lot of your homework in here. If you follow this, you're going, and here's the illustration of where, where, what we want it to be. That's something that they can sort of mark, like march in our door here without too many obstacles in front of them. Okay.
I keep going back to one of the very first things we ever heard as a board when we were handed this project. And that was that, okay, form-based zoning, well, what's that? Nobody's ever heard of it here, really. But the whole idea was form-based zoning focuses on what we want it to look like.
Look like, yep.
You know, over time, this is what it's going to look like, as opposed to the current bylaw, which says, this is a list of all the things you can't do.
Can't do, right, yeah.
And that's not very helpful in envisioning what it might look like.
Yep.
And that's the, the defining characteristic, I think, of what we've come up with. Everything else. Everything else is tailored to fit the situation and the issues that we've had, and our other objectives, obtainable, affordable housing.
Yep.
Restricting, prohibiting short-term rentals, on and on and on. But it's really, this is what it'll make it look like. If we don't have a zoning bylaw, all we have is what's there, which is a list of what you can't do.
Yeah.
Which means, not good, is what that means.
Yep.
So, anyway, but, you know, I still would love to be able to have the people that are there, half of which have never going to have read the bylaw, and don't really have an opinion about it, to let them see the video, but, which has in it the, the renderings, right? And it's really quite, it's really very good.
That's why I'm suggesting that the more you put those pictures up there, the better.
Yeah.
I think that's.
Absolutely.
Good advice. I, I like Christine's suggestion about perhaps putting, putting that in the Chronicle and the link. Hopefully.
Sounds good. With a couple of the renderings, yeah, right?
Yes, even with that.
Can't read that, Mike.
Advertise it in the main sheet.
Main sheet?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Good suggestion, thank you. Any other comments for tonight, board members?
Nope.
Move to June.
Second.
Okay, Warren?
Warren Chain approve.
Bob Wurfschaefer approve.
Bob Dubus approve.
Art Spurri approve. And the time is 6:48. 6:57, I apologize.